Thank you, everyone. So it's kind of going to be the fire hose approach, so please feel free to stop me and say, "Who are you talking about again?" or "Why is this important?" in case I'm not making that quite clear. Quick wrap-up, we ended with 171 legislative session this year. It's one of the longest legislative sessions they've ever had. I think it's only short by two days of the longest, ending on June 30th. Obviously, they have to be done by July 1 for the fiscal budget to actually go into process, or everything kind of shuts down. They passed a $12.8 billion budget, again, one of the larger budget packages they've had, fall completely on party line, so Republican-controlled Senate, Republican-controlled House, Republican Executive. It was completely opposed by both Democrat, all Democrats on both sides of the aisle. They, about 1,900 bills introduced this year at the beginning, and of those, I think about just over 450 actually signed into law. So they went through a long process of filtering a lot of legislation out that actually didn't make it through. As far as the political side is kind of where we wanted to start before we got into some of the bills and legislation. Obviously, this is an election year, so there's going to be a lot of changes happening as things move forward. There's a lot of pieces that are going to be moving within the legislature that are going to affect the next session, and also that affected this session, because if you know that you're wanting to run for a particular position, you start introducing legislation, focusing on that. Other people might be running against you. They then start focusing on that legislation, knowing they can use it as a wedge piece moving into the election. Also, we've had some changes at both the executive level and legislative level is the staff. And so that's kind of where I'm going to start, is at that staff level. It's a little in the weeds, but it gets important as they move forward to all the budget negotiations. In the governor's office, we've had both the chief of staff and the senior policy advisor leave just in the last couple of months. So Daniel Scarpino and Gretchen Conger, sorry, have left, and they have been replaced by Daniel Ruiz is going to be the new chief of staff for the governor. And then they have elevated a few policy folks, Christina Corriere and Caitlin Harrier, who's actually the education policy person. We haven't really figured out what her new job is going to be, or what, not her new job, but what they're adding to her plate. But I think that will also be important moving forward as she's working on different education policies. A longtime staffer in the Senate, Wendy Baldo, she had been there for the last 20 years, and actually been chief of staff for, I believe, the last 10, starting under Bob Burns, finally retired, finally, but she's been there for a long time, finally retired. So that changes the dynamic moving forward in the Senate as well. Something that's interesting that also along those lines is Karen Fan, the current Senate president, has said that she's not going to run, moving, to run for president again, even though she will be in the Senate, that she's decided not, that she's done leading that crew for a while. This obviously becomes important moving into the next session, because everybody who's vying for that position starts kind of flanking out different pieces. And as they start to negotiate the budget, you start to see those different leaders kind of emerge, and who's wanting what. And then it becomes a battle about who's getting what, as opposed to what they're actually getting. And obviously, that changes the dynamic. Running for governor, this year, we have Katie Hobbs and Carrie Lake are the two frontrunners, obviously, on each side, those are the most, are getting most of the press at this point. Steve Gaynor also will be running, Aaron Lieberman, Marco Lopez, Karen Taylor Robson, Matt Salmon, and Kim Yee. So a lot of familiar faces in there that are currently running. At this point, it does seem that the two frontrunners, like I said, are Carrie Lake and Ms. Hobbs moving out of this. I think at this point, the polls are showing everybody else about 20 points behind those two. So obviously, there's a lot of time, a lot of money still to be spent, but that's kind of where things are sitting. They only really impact, I think, the political dynamic moving forward under the guise that they start weighing in on stuff, right? I mean, if we start seeing issues with, you know, whether it's masks on buses, or something that may be in the next pieces, next couple of years, the next year of legislation, and they start weighing in on it, then you start to sway votes different ways, holdouts get a little bit firmer, and things, you know, start to slow down that process a lot. Secretary of State is, we have quite a few people from the legislature running, so this is going to cause a lot of issues, particularly because they're working within the audits, still functioning and trying to function and move forward. So I think you have, obviously, Michelle Ugenti, who's the elections chairman now running, and then you have two House members, Mark Fincham and Shawna Bullock also running. So that dynamic then shifts again, because what are they getting in the budget? How is that election? How long does this last? And so that really starts to interfere with things moving forward. As far as the treasurer, you have Representative Cobb and Representative, and Senator Livingston. So Representative Cobb is the current appropriations chairman, running for that position, and Livingston is the current senator, chairman of the Banking and Insurance Committee, I believe. And so that dynamic really shouldn't get too involved, but it will be a change moving forward, not having her as the appropriations chairman. Superintendent of Public Instruction, obviously, Ms. Hoffman, still running. And then Michelle Udall has, starting to plant some feelers. She has not put anything out there yet, but everybody's starting to rumor that that. Obviously, we saw some legislation coming this year that she sponsors a lot of education, is the education chair. Moving to that position can really change the type of legislation she may feel that she can support, although she usually doesn't make those kind of determinations based on those factors. But obviously, politics is politics, and sometimes it, you know, it interferes in the way things move forward. As far as there's, as far as the CD races, I probably won't go too deep into those unless you guys are interested. There's not a whole lot of change maneuvering in those. You have a lot of incumbents that are coming, but not a whole lot of change from the legislative level that would impact the session moving forward. But as far as the Senate race, obviously, we have Mark Bernovich running against Mr. Kelly, and that is going to, has changed some of that dynamic moving forward, some of the different cases that he decides that he does want to take, perhaps some of the opinions, the way those opinions sway, can obviously be, you know, sidetracked by the political agenda. I think that's all on that. Susie, do you want to?
So...
There are others, I didn't name all of them, but you're, I'm sorry, I just did. Reginald Boulding is also going to be running on the Democratic side, and I left some out for expediency, and I apologize. Now, I don't know what I do with my list. Shawna Bullock, Adrian Fontes on the D side, and then there's Beau Lane as an additional Republican, and then I think I mentioned Ugenti. Sorry, apologies.
So I'm going to take a minute and just talk briefly about what happened in the 2021 legislative session, this past legislative session, and then I think Steve's going to talk a little bit about some of the lawsuits that are going on right now, and then maybe we'll close it up with a little bit of a foreshadowing of what we might be looking at for 2022. Not pretty. In terms of the 2021 session, as Steve mentioned, we had a pretty large budget package pass, again, strictly on party lines, all Democrats opposing. It's a $12.8 billion budget package. There are some investments in specific education priorities over multiple years, beginning in fiscal year '22. Some, you know, are more exciting than others. One really great thing that happened in the budget this year was a $50 million ongoing appropriation to increase special education group B weight funding. And that's something that has really been at issue for the last few sessions, haven't been able to get anything across the finish line. I don't believe group B weight special education funding has been increased in many, many years. So $50 million, along with, and that's ongoing every year, along with a $5 million one-time deposit into a fund called the Extraordinary Special Education Needs Fund, which is a fund that's been on the books for many years, but never has had any money in it. It's really meant for schools who experience uniquely expensive special education costs. They can go to this fund and get reimbursed for those costs. Also, in the budget, $30 million was appropriated over two years for K-12 transportation grants, a pilot program through the Department of Administration, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. A million dollars per year for gifted education was in the budget, $5 million to fund a fourth year for CTE programs, a fourth year of enrollment for CTE programs, and that's been at issue for a number of years, so that's quite a positive feature of the budget. $2.5 million each year for college credit by examination incentive programs, and $1.3 million each year for college placement exam fee waivers. So that's not everything, but those are just some of the highlights. The budget also appropriates one-time funding to the Department of Education for assessments, $5 million for statewide assessment, $850,000 for a gifted student assessment. A number of one-time initiatives funded through the school facilities for school facilities, significant investment in building renewal funding, almost $90 million in FY '22 for building renewal, and then also funding to increase the formula cost for per-square-foot cost to the market rate, which was quite a positive feature out of the budget. That was about $90 million as well, in just '22, and then there'll be ongoing appropriations for that. Starting in fiscal year '24, there's a number of other things that are getting funded. Some of these items may be funded sooner with the governor's discretionary funds, but in fiscal year 2024, the general fund will be appropriating $3.1 million for 25 literacy coaches at ADE, $1.5 million for a kindergarten entry assessment, $1.3 million for dyslexia screening and training, $1 million for ADE to eliminate or reduce CTE exam costs for low-income students, and $1 million for a teacher reading instruction exam. And so those are just some of the bigger features of the budget that was passed. Now, the budget, there's a fee bill that includes appropriations, and then there's a series of other bills that come along with the budget, which comprise the package. One of those, one of those other bills deals with taxation, and in that bill, the budget does enact a fairly substantial tax cut that is estimated to reduce state revenues by about $1 billion a year. That tax cut was enacted as part of the budget as well. It also alters the funding mechanism for Proposition 208, and then uses state general funds to sort of backfill the money that Prop 208 would then not generate because of what the legislature had done. So those are in the budget, and those, Steve will talk more about the litigation around those issues. The education budget reconciliation bill this session, which is a bill that really is, it goes along with the budget to sort of implement, to contain changes that are necessary to implement new appropriations. This year, we saw a record number, an unprecedented number of policy issues that got stuck into that K-12 budget bill. In fact, it's in excess of 250 pages and contains probably 25 different issues rolled up into that one bill, and that is also the subject of a lawsuit. But to just touch briefly on some of the things that are in that K-12 budget reconciliation bill, it also bears noting that some of the issues that got stuck in that bill were policy issues that were unsuccessful in a freestanding, in their freestanding bill form. So some of these issues just couldn't make it across the finish line, but when packaged up with the budget, they were able to leverage the votes to get them across the finish line with the budget. So in that, in that K-12 budget reconciliation, Burbs, House Bill 2898, you'll see the framework for these transportation modernization grants. This is that $30 million over two years. These are grants, this money is, has been contracted from ADOA, the Department of Administration, to an entity called A for Arizona, that'll be responsible for doling out those grants. And school districts are eligible to apply for these grants. They're meant for transportation innovations that are in support of school choice and open enrollment. So that's really the goal of these grants, and those that were proposing the grants, and that grant cycle is open right now. Also, a lot of changes around open enrollment, that, this is one of those issues that couldn't make it in its freestanding form, but a pared-down version found its way into the budget. It's very prescriptive about what district open enrollment policies must include, and it does require schools to accept open enrollment students through, throughout the year as capacity permits. It talks about how schools can provide enrollment preference, and how they can determine, determine how they can reserve capacity for their students, and if there is insufficient capacity, it does require that districts select students through a lottery or a equitable selection process. And that bill, right now, the State Board of Education is working on developing model policies for districts on open enrollment, so that's with the State Board right now. Also, on the fourth year of CTE funding that I mentioned, the House Bill 2898 only allows that fourth year of funding for students who are enrolled in a program that is determined to lead to a career path in high demand with medium-to-high wages in the region that that student lives in. The budget bill also took all responsibilities from the School Facilities Board and gave them to something called the New School Facilities Oversight Board, and the Division of School Facilities, which is within the Department of Administration. So basically, blew up the School Facilities Board and gave those responsibilities to a state agency. Similarly, it took responsibility away from ADE for investigations of certificated and non-certificated persons, and gave that back to the State Board of Ed. As long as I've been doing this, it was with the State Board of Ed, and then they took it out of the State Board of Ed and gave it to the Department of Ed under the Diane Douglas era, and now it's swinging back to the State Board of Ed. Some changes on empowerment scholarship accounts were also in the budget, but it bears noting that not the most expansive provisions that were being proposed in a freestanding bill that would have really expanded eligibility for ESAs. These are more administrative-type changes that are in the budget, and then you all are, you know, more than familiar with the last two issues, which are generating a lot of conversation, the ban on face coverings, and then also the ban on instruction on critical race theory. That was all part of the budget. You know, the critical race theory was a freestanding bill also. It all got wrapped up together. With regard to other bills, House Bill 2023 basically creates a system for disciplining non-certificated persons, and also creates some reporting requirements for those who suspect non-certificated persons are engaged in immoral or unprofessional conduct. House Bill 2035 makes some changes to sex education, basically changes it from an opt-out program, programming to an opt-in, requires some prescriptive amount of time and number of hearings that districts must convene before they can approve a sex education course, and it requires all districts to, if they are offering sex education, to review their programs and make sure they're in compliance by December 15 of this year. Some changes to student discipline for kids, kiddos in K through 4th grade, basically prohibits suspensions and expulsions except in very limited circumstances, and requires districts, before they would do a suspension or expulsion, to employ alternative behavioral techniques, and to make sure that they have readmission policies available for those kids. House Bill 2135 is a bill that now allows, permanently allows, school districts to note the learning outcomes that a student has mastered, to provide a record of the demonstrated competencies, and to award partial credit for a class. House Bill 2210 says school boards may now provide food and beverages at school district events. This has been a, there's been a, yeah, there's been legal interpretations that doing that was a gift of public funds. I think some districts had some audit findings around that, so this should clear up that issue, and now you may provide food for school, official school functions and trainings and the like. We had a pause, as you all know, on letter grades this session in light of COVID, so that's 2402. But it does bear mentioning that next year, there's going to be a new statewide assessment. And so this, originally, the request was for two-year pause on letter grades. The legislature only agreed to a one-year pause on letter grades, so I do think this accountability issue will be coming back to the legislature this next year as well. And then I think one of Mesa's favorite bills, House Bill 2862, Schools Instructional Time Models. That bill passed, and it now allows school sites to deliver required instructional time and hours through any combination of direct instruction, project-based learning, mastery-based learning, or independent learning time. And it says that as long as you're not providing more than 50% of the instruction remotely for this upcoming fiscal year, your funding will not be affected. And then in future years, after 2022, that number goes to 40% cap on what you can deliver remotely. House Bill 2906 is another critical race theory-type bill. This one, it prohibits state, the state, state agencies, counties, and political subdivisions from using their monies to require an employee to engage in training, orientation, or therapy that presents any form of blame or judgment on the basis of race, ethnicity, or sex. So that bill prohibits the training element of that. And then a couple of bills on mental health. Senate Bill 1097 requires ADE to identify an absence due to mental or behavioral health, for mental or behavioral health reasons, as an excused absence. And that, there's another bill on mental health, 1376, that requires the State Board of Ed to mandate that mental health instruction be included in all health education instruction going forward. Senate Bill 1139 is a bill that provides districts with more flexibility for their allocation of classroom site fund monies by getting rid of these, this very prescriptive formula or buckets, which you had to use those monies for. It also expands classroom site fund distributions to include a base pay and performance pay component for teacher compensation, and then also student support services. It added student support services to that as well. And, let's see, 1572 is a bill on early literacy, and it has quite a few provisions in it, many of which are funded through the budget, so they will be implemented. Beginning in 2025, the State Board of Ed is required to have a, require a literacy endorsement for all certificated teachers who provide literacy instruction in K through 5th grade, and that endorsement is going to require the passage of a literacy instruction assessment, and that, the monies have been appropriated for that purpose as well. Also, beginning in August of 2022, all teacher prep programs are going to have to teach, are going to have to require all those courses that are necessary for that literacy endorsement. And then that bill also delays some prior legislation that went into effect around dyslexia training, and it grants another year's delay in that. So by July 1 of 2022, school districts will have to ensure that 1K through 3rd grade teacher in each school has received dyslexia training, and then also the deadline for ADE to develop dyslexia, dyslexia screening plan is also delayed to the 2022. So that's pretty much it. We've got some, handed out some reports that have, like, everything in there, so if anybody has any questions afterwards, but I just wanted to hit some of the highlights.
So there are a few court cases that are ongoing because of the 2021 legislative session. Obviously, Prop 208 is a big one that everybody's going to know what's happened so far, and basically, the Supreme Court has now kind of kicked it back to the trial court, but said if the trial court needs to look at the expenditure limitation and see where we're at. Everybody who knows from Prop 301, which was done a few years ago to reinstate, we are already going to exceed that expenditure limit just based on those numbers, so any additional dollars are going to have to be allocated into, or any additional expansion is going to have to be assessed moving forward. There, we've had some initial discussions with legislators, and there does seem to be consensus that this needs to happen. The question is, obviously, how much? So how large should that expansion be? And whether or not it needs to be, have a time limit put on it, so where it needs to be reassessed on a ongoing basis, whether we need to expand it beyond where it is now, and then have it reevaluated in five years, and be resent to the voters on a continuous basis to have that continually looked at. So that's kind of seems to be where the discussion is going to be moving into this next session. As Susie alluded to, the single-subject rule, again, that education burbs this year was significant, 250 pages, all sorts of new policy, all sorts of policy that died. There's always kind of been a golden rule when they were drafting these, everything that is in one of these budget reconciliation bills, is what they call in burbs, has to somehow be attached to the fee bill. The fee bill has all the money, the burbs have the policy that implements the money. You have to find a way to draw that correlation. Obviously, throughout the last couple of years, these things have kind of strayed off the tracks, and more and more stuff gets put in there, and this year, I think, was just kind of a tipping point of how much stuff actually got put in there. And I think that, going back to what we discussed earlier about how the numbers are so close within the House and the Senate, with only 31 Republicans in the House, 29 Democrats, 16 and 14 in the Senate, basically, you had one vote that could hold up the entire package. And so they really, they couldn't kind of disregard anybody if they were going to be able to maintain, moving forward with an all-Republican package, as they have tried to do for the last several years. So on the single-subject issue, I won't go too much farther into that. We're still waiting to see how that's going to pine out. The big thing will be is if some of those, if they are kicked out, the entire legislation will be then be put out. So we could lose that entire budget burb, for better or for worse. Obviously, Susie said there's a lot of good things that are on there as well, and there's a lot of controversial issues that people weren't wanting to see. So they'll have to be, if that does proceed forward, they'll have to readdress all those issues again individually, and most likely within its own specific legislation as it was intended. There's another piece of legislation we won't go too far into, but just has to do with records requests. This is pertaining mostly to the audit this year. I bring it up just because next year, it will be a huge issue on what is going to be public record, private record, what has to be sure. That's going to be something that, that private, those privacy issues are going to hold up the budget in a lot of discussions. You're going to see a lot of businesses getting involved in that. So I think, and obviously, the schools will be impacted, depending on how that moves forward. The last lawsuit has to do with minimum wage. In 2016, we had Prop 206 that increased the minimum wage to $12. The cost of living increased on top of that. As some of you may know, Flagstaff did their own minimum wage bill, increasing it to $15 an hour. This made the legislature upset. They put a piece in that said if they cost the state any money, we're going to take it from you. And so this is the first year that they did. They assessed the city of Flagstaff $1.1 million, trying to take back the money that goes to, there's different areas, from community colleges to developmentally-disabled funding to elderly and physically disabled funding. So there's different areas that there is still a state compact with state contracts that have to go out to those entities. I think this is important because the city of Tucson now is looking to do this moving forward. They have, and the November ballot is going to be, looking to increase their minimum wage to $15 an hour. If you have Flagstaff in Tucson, Phoenix is not going to be far behind, and obviously, that'll impact everybody when you're looking at competition and compression issues and things moving forward. Right now, the city of Flagstaff is suing the state and saying, "You can't, you can't take our money." And they're saying, "Of course we can. It's in the urban revenue sharing, and we hold it for you." And so the outcome of that, really, moving forward is going to be, I think, will dictate maybe not so much what happens in Tucson, but whether or not the city of Phoenix gets involved moving forward, and how big this gets, and how much we expand. Obviously, then, also, the Department of Labor is coming out with their new numbers on the minimum wage here next month, and you're looking at minimum wage going up about 65 cents. So that kind of plays into the market economy of everybody in what you're trying to hire moving forward.
We were just going to talk about some things we think might be coming in 2022, and then we can take some questions. Obviously, the expenditure limit issue is going to be, going to be a big deal, and so that's one, we think, you know, there's some of the, some of the things that didn't pass this session, like the expansion of the ESA program. I think the proponents are almost certain to make another run at that. We know there was also some very prescriptive legislation around the posting of instructional materials and activities. We would expect to see that again. Obviously, you know, we aren't going to get away from the masks and vaccine conversation anytime soon. I think also, there's been a longstanding war at the legislature between the tobacco industry... industry and the public health organizations and schools, really trying to tighten up our regulation of vaping. And so that has been unsuccessful. They fought to a death, you know, for the last three sessions, and nothing has gotten passed on the industry side or the public health side. So that's going to continue to be a big topic as well. And then I think that there's going to be, I don't know that it's going to be successful, but I think there's going to be more conversation around finance reform ideas, and I mean, in terms of also increasing resources for schools, whether that looks like a poverty weight, or whether that continues to discuss, you know, the deficits in special education funding, which there no doubt are. The Superintendent of Public Instruction has used some of her discretionary funds to commission a special education cost study to try to come up with some data around that. I think people feel pretty certain that they're going to, that's going to demonstrate, you know, still a lot of deficits and special ed funding. So I think there will still be some conversations around those finance pieces. And then, you know, there are a number of study committees or reports that the legislature is waiting, is going to be waiting for before the next session on, you know, learning loss. There's a report on the K-3 reading program that is going to be due. There's a discussion around alternative assessments for special education students. There'll be a study group meeting on that topic. And also, the ADE crisis management team is also required to report out on its recommendations. So any of those interim conversations may lead to policy topics for next session as well.
I guess from there, just any questions? There's a lot. Maybe.
So I am pretty certain that those were actually funded, but with the federal funds through the Department of Economic Security. So I don't know that those bills passed in bill form, but I do think those initiatives are moving forward with some of the federal money. Is that correct?
I think so. If it's what I'm thinking of, there was about...
I understood, but I don't know how that would filter to all the districts.
So I don't think that's been determined yet. I think, obviously, there was a significant amount of more money going into the early education and child development categories. Usually, there's a grant somewhere in the neighborhood of $80 million. It then went up to $120 million, and I think this year, it was close to almost $1 billion. I mean, so it significantly jumped. There was some hesitation at the legislative level to appropriate those dollars, obviously, because they don't want to appropriate them, then have the agencies making the determination. They've kind of gone under the radar for the last several years, but because of the significance this year. I know that, I believe, Representative Osborne has been working with a coalition to try and determine how those are going to be put out. That includes the Department of Economic Security, the Governor's Office, and AZAGA, I believe, is the, but I can't tell you what that stands for, but Early Child Development Coalition, Children's Action Alliance, a few others like that. But we have not seen, the implementation will not be in statute. That was kind of the way they thought they could get the funding for it under the radar, is if they didn't draw attention to what it would be used for as much with kind of a backroom handshake on, we'll work together to get these dollars out in the most appropriate manner.
You raise, it's a good point, which is chasing down the details of some of the spending, particularly the federal discretionary spending, it's not easy.
And I think also with that, I think...
It's not always transparent.
They're saying, like with ARPA, it's almost $5 billion has come into Arizona with some of those dollars. Obviously, that's going to lead to some discussion on the tax cuts. We've already seen where they're trying to make the determination that we can't use the tax, we can't have the tax, the $1.9 billion in tax cuts that were passed as part of this budget, because we've been kind of balancing those books on some of those additional federal dollars. So that discussion, obviously, will continue as well.
The funding is primarily in that fee bill, which is not going to be at issue in those single-subject suits, but the implementing, so it's a good question. So for example, the fee bill said, we're going to give $50 million in new funding for special education. When you then go to the BURB, the budget reconciliation bill, it talks about, you know, you're increasing this group B weight by this percentage for these kids. I mean, it's got, it's very specific. So you're still going to have the $50 million for special education funding, but you may not have those details about implementation. So it's going to be tricky with every issue. But just the simple, straight-up appropriations, the money is still going to be flowing, is still going to be a valid appropriation. It's going to be unprecedented, I think, in how you try to unravel all of that.
Yeah, and again, this is the first time they've, there's multiple lawsuits on the single-subject. There's not only the education portion, you have the city of Phoenix, who is doing it with the, some of the police union issues and citizen boards that was also put in their criminal justice burbs. So this is the first time you're really seeing somebody challenge that single-subject issue. So like you said, it's going to be completely unprecedented to see how that turns out. But it will change the way they budget moving forward. No matter what, they'll be a little bit more specific as to how they tie those pieces and looking at how they're, you know, what policy issues they're wrapping in, you know, just to buy votes.
Which in terms of process can only be a good thing, I think. I mean, you know, it's just, it's, that's...
It's a good thing for policy. It'll be much more difficult to actually get something done, I mean, and get the final product that we've had, specifically, again, because of the margins that we're looking at. Or maybe it forces a more bipartisan budget, and then that's a better overall outcome as well, if you see it that way.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Well, thank you to Stephen and to Susie for taking a ton of information and consolidating it for us, and you've got plenty of handouts, should you want to take those home with you as well.